Welcome, everybody, to today's workshop. It is three o'clock there.
I know.
It is three thirty-five.
Big clock.
Do we have anybody sign up? Okay. We'll move right on to the next item, which is to discuss any regular meeting agenda items for tonight's meeting. Counselor staff, anything consent or regular agenda we need to review? Everybody good? Ryan, Kevin?
I'm having a thing.
One. Hmm? You're voting on one thing this one?
Meeting without extension.
Okay.
Starting over my record at one.
Oh.
One and a half.
All right. Very good. Next up, we'll receive a performance report from Hill Country Transit. Flores, you're up.
All right, all right. I get the hour long here that.
She's done it.
Oh, you had it. Okay, great. Thank you. Well, thank you for the opportunity to present our first performance report since the big transformation. I am pleased to say that we've gone through a gauntlet over the last couple of years and made tremendous progress. Couldn't do it without the team and the support of all the communities and cities that were patient while we went through it. So I'm hoping, hoping today will be a good news story. We will continue to have good news stories.
We are.
But but before we get to the good news, it's always good to reflect of where we've been so that we can understand the measure of our success, if that makes sense. So back in twenty-one, the Hill Country Transit District Board of Directors hired a third-party consultant that did a wonderful job of assessing the state of the transit district. There was questions about should we reform? What should we do? The culmination of all that was the decision to hire a third-party management company to come in and try to turn it around before we figured out what in the future would be the interest of communities. And so they hired us, the Henderson Transportation Group. For the record, I'm Raymond Flores, the general manager of the Hill Country Transit District. I'm proud to lead it. We came in twenty-two. First thing I did was sit down with with our chair and vice chair. There was, it was about, it was an interesting time when we came in because it was a desire at that time to just interview folks, gather, assess the situation, start formulating a plan, but to not make any significant changes because there was, there was several seats that were potentially going to change. And so they didn't want to start go out and do a strategic visioning session and then have half the board or section of the board turnover. So we were kind of on pause for the six, I'd say, six to nine months. And then in twenty-twenty-three, I worked for the board and we held a strategic vision session to kind of move the agency forward. This was what we were hearing as well as from the, from, I just just boiled it down to this about what would, why there was a desire to transform the the transit district. I'm not gonna read all of them, but basically unreliable, that there was a lack of equity, there was a lack of performance, there was a lack of of trust in the performance reports. The information wasn't really telling anything about the investments that were being made and the return on the value for that return on investment. And, you know, as we looked at it, there was a poor route design. It, it's not that it was poor, it's just that times have changed, technology changed with COVID and a lot of delivery to home, travel patterns changed. And this transit district, much like many across the nation, if you're not paying attention to that, you saw a sharp decline. Everybody saw a sharp decline in ridership with COVID, but coming out of COVID, ridership wasn't bouncing back. It was actually continuing to go down. So obviously, there were, there were issues here. There was a desire, and there's always gonna need, need to be a desire to diversify the funding. But as funding was restricted, it's almost like a thousand cuts. You start cutting service, it creates service gaps, you have less efficiency, people can't get around. And then people start questioning, well, what's the value of the system? And I think that's kind of where we all concluded that we were. From, from a professional perspective, that red dotted line is kind of like the lowest bar before you decide to make changes. As a matter of fact, most transit districts by policy have, have a policy that states if, if your performance falls below or to the left of the red line, you're required to come back with either a service cut or options to change it, but don't get in this state and continue to operate because you're not from a, from a fiscal responsibility as board members. We're not doing our jobs and we're not making sure that our service works properly. And so this was kind of the measure when we came in. As you can see, almost all the routes were to left the line and the two that were above the line were only two point one and two point two respectively, passengers per service hour. So that means that vehicle's out there for an entire hour and only twelve people used it to get on and get off. So not a great value proposition. This is why.
Raymond, does that mean that one person would count twice? You didn't say to get on and get off?
Well, that's, when they get on is one trip. If they get on another vehicle, that's another trip. So.
But if they make it to their destination?
Yeah, that's one, that's one trip.
Okay.
Yeah. And this was part of the problem is the service ran once per hour in each city in one direction. So if you had to go a half a mile that way, you may have had to go fifteen miles in the wrong direction to get where you need to go. So it only ran once every hour and you could be on that vehicle for at least an hour before you got to your destination. If you missed it, you're losing a couple of hours. So if you had to get from Cove to Temple or reverse trip, Temple back to Cove, it could take you almost a half a day to get there. Not a great service. So this is the results, right? Low ridership, two hundred eighty-four thousand total. Temple had eighty-six thousand passengers. So from that, we started meeting with the board over about four or five months. We started having discussions. We came up with eight different work streams that really needed to be addressed. The structure and the governance of the transit district, we heard a lot about, hey, there's nine counties and five cities. And while the majority of the people are in the cities, the counties have strong vote. That was not an easy thing to address, but March one, all of that will be addressed. So we've made great progress there. We'll need to work on governance a bit. Once we meet on, in the March board meeting, we'll have to relook at bylaws and our enabling legislation and governance and probably change some things, do some house, housekeeping and cleaning so we can move the agency forward. We had to redesign the system for the continued growth that we can see in double-digit growth in this area, which is phenomenal. We wanted to make the system more efficient and effective. There was a lot of feedback about lack of technology, lack of visibility, knowing where the buses. Did I just miss it? Or when you're waiting an hour and you just miss a bus, that can be very infuriating and a major barrier for people using the system, just lack of information, visibility. There's, we've done a lot around leadership, workforce, competency gaps. Because the headquarters was in San Saba, the general manager and the CFO did all the procurements, did all the financial planning, did all the budgeting. And even though we had directors in Belton, they had no say, no visibility in anything. So they don't, they didn't have the core competency. So a lot of work has been done. I think the enthusiasm, the culture has drastically improved. The partnership, the teaming drastically improved. I invited half my staff here just so they can get used to the good news story because they've been working so hard and they're all decided to continue to work. And I, I don't know if that's a good thing or a bad thing to show today. So we're making progress there. The area that we're still working on, probably our weakest link right now is around communication experience, the brand, the stakeholder community engagement. So I'm taking a staff member and repurposing their position, that individual to start being our community engagement person so that we're meeting quarterly with, with our counties, with our stakeholders, getting out in the community, starting things like social service roundtables, discussion with businesses. I've been talking, thank you for your patience, Brandon, about setting up a transit management association. This is the right time to do it because we have, we have all this infrastructure in place to actually leverage it. We were talking about it before we made the, the change, we wouldn't have been able to get there. So I think a lot of good stuff is coming. And then I, I hope you see, you know, today and moving forward, we have a tremendous amount of business intelligence. We can report, we can show you literally by minute of the, minute of the day, the hotspots and the areas of where people are moving and where the, where the major trip generators are. And it just helps us all do a better job of planning moving forward. This is really where the board helped provide the guidance that we needed to shape the organization. From all of that history, we said, we need enhanced mobility, we need to make it a multimodal we need to grow ridership, promote economic growth and stability, but really that far top corner, enhance access to jobs, education, medical, entertainment. The system has had this brand on it that was just for elderly and disabled and disadvantaged community members. Now everybody's using it for just about every type of trip, entertainment, going to school, getting to a job, getting home from a job. And we're, we'll in the future start showing you those different categories or trip generators, trip types in the reporting. From the service, we wanted to improve the access to the system. Again, if you visualize all those routes, if you didn't live within, I mean, I don't know about you, but I have a hard time walking a half a mile in the heat or in the rain or in the cold and all those different elements that we have, especially if there's not a shelter. So they're just the nat- naturally, the way transit systems have been set up, the people that used it were typically, they had no choice. That was their only way to, to get around. But if you want to improve, improve the quality of life for everybody, enhance equity, and you build a system that everybody can use regardless of your ability, whether you're in a wheelchair, whether you're ambulatory, or if you're having a business trip, or you're, you're just trying to go down the street and get groceries. And I think that's what we've, we've created. We, we operated, I want to say it was twelve hours a day. Now we're operating fourteen hours a day. And then from an experience perspective, we wanted to engage every rider. One, from giving them information about a trip, two, letting them know where their vehicle was. Three, giving them the ability on every trip that they go on to give us immediate feedback, which they can. And four, we can push information directly to their phone about anything that's happening, inclement weather. Hey, we have a driver that called out, or we had a vehicle that wrote down. We can send all kinds of messages back and forth. So vastly improve that. I'm here to start a outreach with our stakeholders to show the efficacy of the system. Really important if you want a sustainable system to provide wayfinding, which is just how do I get to the system? How do I use the system? And then ultimately, the bottom right-hand corner is kind of the money. It's like where, where, how do you know that the system works? Well, you need to reduce your wait time, you need to reduce the trip duration, you need to make sure it's safe and it's customer friendly and people feel like they would use the system. And I'm hearing when I walk around, I was at Colleen two days ago and this lady sat next to me. She was, she was over seventy and she said, hey, you're the, you're the hot guy, right? And I said, yes, ma'am. And she goes, I gotta tell you, this system is amazing. I'm starting to use it, love it. Man, what a difference. And that's what we want to hear everywhere we go. So just anecdotally, that's what we're hearing. So this is, this is the system now. Everything that's in a different color, you have access anywhere, anywhere you want to go within those lines. It doesn't cover your entire city limits, but we intentionally did that to start out from a budgetary perspective. We wanted to make sure that the system worked and that we were covering the highest density areas. Because if you go to low density, the family that you go out, the potential of higher wait times, and we wanted to get the system started. At least go through six months, come back with data so we could talk about things that we do in the future, but you can see it's very streamlined. All of the cities are connected to this, this commuter route that runs at a high frequency, at thirty-minute frequency. It used to take you two to three hours to get across the metroplex. It takes you forty-five minutes total drive time to get to and from. And then every one of these is a on-demand vehicle will come to you, pick you up, and then take you to one of these points. The other important thing is that we included Fort Cab. It's a city in and of itself. We generated two hundred and thirty thousand trips in our first year. They expected thirty as a, as a goal. It is the first in the history of the military anywhere in the world. It has, it's, it's achieved a high visibility all the way to Pentagon, Fort, Fort Bliss, a lot of other transit or military installation like this. And they helped fund this commuter service. They're putting in about a half a million dollars a year so that the military not only can get on and off the base, but they can get to any one of the cities, all as one integrated system.
Is that mostly because the soldiers and families don't have transportation? Or are they using it for some reason other than I have my own car, but I need to take?
All of the above, all of the above. They're using it to get to their, their work duty assignments. They're using it to get to the commissaries to eat lunch, to do whatever they need to do. They're taking it. The doctor's offices, they're taking it off the transit facility because the system by design it's a public transit system. It goes on and off the base. They, there's a virtual hub at the visitor center where they literally hop on and off and they can go anywhere they need to go. So they're using it for various assets.
Just like, just like anyone else?
Just like anyone else.
Yeah.
As a matter of fact, I don't know, I, I didn't know this until I first tried to get access. Anybody from the general public can get on and off the base. All they have to do, you can literally on your phone, you can just go to Fort Cavazos and ask for a pass and within you put in your driver's license, you put in your address and a couple of other personal pieces of data and it checks you across database and then grants you a pass. You can get your own pass for a year. Up to a year, you just have to re, re-up it every time you want to go on and off. You can use the facilities, you can play golf, you can do all these things. So not, I, I didn't realize that. I think most of the general public doesn't realize that. So they just want to make sure that you, they know who you are when you're coming in and out. But for the most part, it's just an extension of the transit system. And we're working with the FDA to add them in knowledge, the fact that it's not a military-based system, it's a public transit system. And when we do, we'll get credit for about two hundred and thirty thousand trips and it'll increase the federal apportionments that we get in the service area. So they're, they're funding it a hundred percent and they're also funding a portion of this regional connector because they realize the impact and are part of the region. So, so far we've got two years of funding. They're super happy. They're going for the third year. Okay. This is what it looks like now. It's highly available. The term resiliency is just to make sure that, that the system is virtualized on cloud servers. So it minimizes downtime. Everything can go down, even your cell phone, but it's highly resilient. The system is highly available during the weekdays. Your wait, what I mean by highly available is you typically don't wait more than about fifteen minutes unless it's a high traffic day or it's in peak. It averages about ten to twelve minute wait time, in some cases a little bit longer, but not too bad. Everybody can use it for every type of trip. We have one service-type vehicle that's wheelchair-equipped. It's a, it's a fourteen-passenger van. It's very nimble. It, it'll reduce the impact on streets, on potholes, on broken turn radius and all that other stuff. It improves safety, improves foods, the speed of your roads because these vehicles can get into parking lots with people up in the one way. But a lot of benefits here. Advanced design. We have a high, high-visibility BI tool that, that will show you stuff. We went from an hour wait time to less than fifteen minutes. And I think I've, I've covered the majority of that. In addition to completely changing the transit system, we managed a a split of the transit district. Really challenging. These don't happen often, but we had to work with the Federal Transit Administration, Tech dot, many, many, many meetings. And to migrate five counties to three neighboring transit districts. You can imagine what that might, could potentially look like. I will say, standing here today on March first, we already have cessation letters from everybody that they're leaving. We had to negotiate asset distribution and transit. I think not only is everybody leaving, so San Saba, Hamilton Mills are going to Central Texas Rural Transit District, Lannan's going to Carts, which is adjunct to Cat Metro. And then Mason is going to Concho Valley. We were able to show that the majority of the trips from those counties were actually going into these mid-districts. And, and we were able to take some of the retired assets that we were going to auction off and give them some of those assets to help them along the way. So we negotiated a lot of, it, it seems like simple stuff, but it wasn't obvious. And we, we got it done. And I think everybody's actually happy. So imagine going through a fourteen-member divorce, much like fourteen, and making sure everybody was felt like they were taken care of. Moreover, I just got a call from one of the other general managers. He says, you know, I gotta tell you because there, they had something happen to them, right? They were, they had to take on, I mean, it was aggravation on their part. They had to take on a new county and provide services. But every one of those general managers has said how smooth it was. They appreciated it. They, they were thankful to this transit district adding some additional assets that really had no value to us. And we moved on. So we're really proud of that. They didn't do it by themselves. The whole team really was involved in, in making all that happen. So we're really excited about it. So the new Hill Country Transit District is going to be Colleen, Temple, Belton, Coppersco, Parker Heights, Bell County, Mylum County, Corial County, and the City of Landpasses. And those four counties all feed into this region for services. So for the first time in the history of this transit district, we are going to have a fully connected transit system. We have new rural routes that are going to start feeding the commuter service and they're going to start feeding into that, that commuter network. And we'll, we'll literally have a fully integrated system, which is pretty cool. So on their operations side, we redesigned the entire system. We purchased and replaced the entire fleet in one year. We negotiated new parking agreements so that we can eliminate all these deadhead miles. Deadhead means they, the buses go to sleep in a central location. The drivers, operators drive all the way to Belton, they turn them on, then they drive all the way back to Temple and Cove. And so all those miles that they're driving to get to the starting point is deadhead. It's wasted miles, it's fuel, it's maintenance, it's tires, it's brakes. All that's going away because in partnership with you, we have a location here, we have our location at Fort Cab. And so those vehicles go to sleep, where people go to sleep and then wake up where people need to start their day and then come in. So much more efficient. And we deployed their, we hired a significant number of drivers and typically you'd think, oh, well, that's a lot more cost. But by hiring more people, mixing part-time and full-time, we're actually able to reduce our overall costs, improve the health and quality of life for our drivers because it's one of the most stressful jobs. And a lot of times they're, they're operating way too many hours. And so we increased our number of people that reduced the overall cost. That's why we haven't asked for any increases in, in local contribution for our second year. And I'm hoping that we do that for a third year. We consolidated all the administration operations and maintenance from San Saba. We should have that finished by March one. Our staff has been working really hard to migrate everything from bank accounts to scanning documents and all kinds of things. So it's been a major undertaking. We successfully combined three different services, non-emergency medical demand response and fixed route into one efficient system. I mentioned Fort Cab already. We redesigned the entire rural transit system. We removed hundreds and hundreds of bus shelters that aren't really needed anymore because people are getting picked up where they are opposed to at a shelter.
Raymond, what happened to the building in San Saba?
So we're in the process of working with Tech Dot. So the majority of that building, almost all of it, was federally and state-funded. So there is, on a fair, you're equal life, you've had the building ten years or so. So it still has, the majority of the interests are still federal and state. And we're not going to use it. They want us to either sell it. But the book value is, is, we're, we're underwater on it because we had a lot of federal money. So it was overbuilt for the area that it's in. So we negotiated an agreement with the receiving Transit District, Central Texas Rural Transit, to take ownership of the building. So we're working through a deed of trust transfer or deed, land deed and facility deed transfer. So we're working with Tech Dot through, through that process and that should be done in mid, no later than in March. I'm hoping it'll be March one, but I'm not sure we can get there. And they'll take over the federal responsibilities of continuing to, the investments already been made.
Right.
And it's a matter of.
Is it occupied day-to-day?
Barely.
Yeah.
Yeah. Right now, there's a handful of operators. We have successfully either eliminated positions. There's two key finance positions that we're, we're looking at making them remote employees. They've been long-tenured employees. They, they're very helpful. We're going to try it, see if it works. But we'll look at the value proposition of that long-term. So a lot of things going on, on the operations redesign.
Raymond, we need hired the new drivers. Do they have to have CEO since they're small?
They do not. It, it did. So I would say across the country, transit is experiencing about a twenty to thirty percent turnover rate on their employees. Not on the administrative side, but on their, on the operations maintenance side. And while I'd like to say we can do things to mitigate that, one of the biggest challenges is third parties just paying more. And you, you see the, the platoon of buses coming in and out of, of the Austin area for Tesla and others. They hire our drivers away. There's nothing about it. We, we can't compete with them. So what we've done is we've mixed the workforce. We've taken that into consideration that we have high turnover. We did something really, I think, is, is fairly innovative, which is to integrate Uber into our system so that any workforce, because if somebody doesn't show up for a shift, that means that vehicle's not going out. We have the ability to moderate our hiring process so we don't burn out our HR people. We have the ability to ramp up and ramp down by brokering trips over to Uber. And we went from zero to about twenty-five to thirty percent of our trips being, being performed by Uber. But it's literally on a trip-by-trip, case-by-case basis that we control.
So cost-effective in that to do that?
It's very cost-effective.
Nice.
Think, think about, so your, your costs, your costs can range on, let's say, an on-demand service at fifty-six dollars an hour. It's the most expensive air transit on demand, but it's typically carrying one or two people from origin to destination. Our average trip costs are around nine dollars right now, fifty-nine dollars with Uber. And we're not paying the person full-time to drive a vehicle. I know there's plus of the minuses. In every trip, the rider gets to choose whether they want to wait for one of our vehicles or to elect to use Uber. That's a federal requirement and people are often in. I mean, why not? For two dollars, you can get across town once people understand. The, the issue that we really need to work on is marketing and awareness and we've built all this infrastructure and we need to maximize the use of it. We have somebody starting on the tent that's an expert in this. And so you'll start seeing a lot more advertising and communication, community engagement. It's not going to cost the district any, anymore because we're funding it out of our efficiencies that we're. These are additional accomplishments. We are probably, another weak link that we have is our financial and payroll systems. We, we did a major upgrade. If you want to call it that, but it's still, it is very archaic. It's causing a lot of manual effort, but nevertheless, we upgraded it to a more advanced, more advanced system. We consolidated thirteen banks. So we had a bank open in every one of our counties and it was, it was for, it was for small, small dollar items like washing a vehicle and that sort of stuff. We're paying more in account banking fees than it's worth. So we're consolidating, we managed to consolidate all that. We did an upgrade to the payroll system. We migrated everything to the cloud. We've upgraded our telecommunications backbone to fiber. We installed a whole enterprise system with business intelligence. We implemented an electronic fare payment system. That was huge. That was huge. We automated all this trip integration with Uber. That's not, it's not something that's simple to do and very few companies are able to do it. The company that we hired had this native integration, so it's been working great. We have our fuel system. We switched over our area-wide packet communication. We, vehicles are constantly peaking and giving you updated information. And that's how our drivers do their work manifest, the first net. Which is proprietary. It's the same network that police and fire and others use. So even in low bandwidth areas. If there's even a faint signal, we get priority on it. So it's worked extremely well. And then we've implemented cameras in all of our supervisor vehicles. So if there's any incident or anything that's going on, it makes the system safer. So I, I will just say before I leave that, most companies would try to do one or two. Other things that we did in one year, we did all of this in a year, which is extraordinary. And my, I tip my hat to the staff. That they didn't lose their temper. Well, not often. But they are more energetic and happy. They can look back at this and go, wow, we did all of this here. And I've seen transit districts that just tried to do fare payment and it took them a year and year. Here are the, a few high level. Graphics of how the system's performing. So on-time performance is a big measure. If you're not on time, people don't like using it. We're at about ninety-two, ninety-three percent typically in transit. With our old system, we're at about sixty-five. You can see that ridership continues to grow. We've been doing this now for five months without. A whole lot of marketing and advertising. Once we get marketing and advertising, I expect this thing to really go off the charts. The cancellation of people looking like they're going to buy and get a trip and then they decide not to has been steadily going down. And then you can see our Uber trip generation going up, which is great. And then ultimately the ridership growth. So. This is extraordinary. In five months, we're looking at about a doubling of ridership. For, for your city. So your, your ridership's doubling. I would think after your first year, you might actually see it triple. About thirty percent of the trips, twenty, twenty to thirty percent of the trips are, are leveraging Uber. This is just great. Great performance. I hope you're hearing the value from your citizens. If not, we, we, we want to know it. But as I recall, maybe two years ago, there was a lot of. Consideration about thinking about just going to an Uber service system. I think we've delivered that for you and more. Because it's not only Uber, but this is shared. This is, we can get fourteen people in a van at one time. The more people we have. On a vehicle, the, the more efficient and effective the system is. And we tied it into a regional connector. So where do we go from here? Well, as I mentioned, the twenty-seventh of February is a. Monumental day. It'll be the last day that the, the fourteen members meet. The March Board meeting will be nine members. Cities will have more votes than the counties. And with Bell County, you'll, you'll definitely have the majority of the votes to move the orphanage forward. We need to elect a new chair and vice chair on, in the February board meeting. Moving forward, as far as charting a new path, we need to continue to improve the system and its ridership. Major focus will be marketing, communications. And I think we're in a great position. The next time we meet, start talking about. Broadening, expanding the service parameters. There's areas that we have not covered yet that you might want to cover. And just bear in mind, we stretch it out. Our performance may go, your, your wait time may go up a little bit. But we're far beneath what we said we would deliver. That was my hope. My expectation and it's come true.
I just looked at the map and you are at the end of my street. How rude?
We're making you walk.
Well, you know what? That's fine. I will walk to the end of the street to get on the hop. Like I, it almost gets there, but not quite.
Another major, another major opportunity is around vehicles. For businesses, they're, they're probably the most efficient, nationally the most efficient and effective form of. Public transit, if you will. And the reason it's so effective and efficient is typically the way the systems are set up and it's enterprise, commute with enterprise. Really is nine hundred pound gorilla across the country. They manage the system. We pay a third of the cost of vehicle and its fuel and all that. The passengers or the people that are part of the amp will pay a third. And then you typically can use. Federal local money to pay for a third of it. So. There's a lot of advantage to employees to get back and forth. The advantage to businesses is many businesses. That have second and third shifts, transit systems don't stay open and they're not open late enough, they're not open on weekends. They can set up amples. And the, the, the business can pay a third, make an employee benefit. We pay a third, the employees pay a third. Very effective, very efficient. And I've set these up in other parts around the country. They've been very successful. And then Transit Management Association, I've talked to. Daryl Burtner on our staff. He's been on our staff for a long time. He's excited about championing, creating a TMA. We'll get to that later, but it's basically created a board of public, I'm sorry, private entities. That have needs for transit and they can choose to invest money, invest it into the transit system if they choose to. We can even, I, I've done through TMAs. Autonomous vehicles, all kinds of different things that we can do. But it's really trying to engage the. Business community, the public community, and then social services to all feel vested and have input and hopefully help us build a better transit system. And that's it. So I can answer any questions that you might have, but it's been an honor and a pleasure to serve your city. And this entire region, I really have enjoyed the several years that I've put in here to help make this dream come true for all of us. I know it's not a panacea, I mean, it's transit, but transit can really. Make you more competitive for business relocations. It's quality of life. I'm, I'm telling you things you already know. Which is why you wanted it, but I'm just proud of the team and in honor to have been able to deliver this.
Yeah, there were a couple of years in there where. The hop was a real challenge. You know, administratively. It's like there was. Folks come in asking for more money. And you know, that, that just doesn't make sense. And ridership was going down. And I am, and so whenever we sort of embarked, we, I use that very loose, I know it was Brendan, Mike and Jessica. But whenever we embarked on this, I really didn't think it'd get done and get done well. And I was one hundred percent wrong. You guys have dug in, listened to your constituents. And it really made some changes. This is, this is, this is government at its best. And for, for my chair and from others that I've talked to, other cities and counties, everyone is impressed. And so we're just very thankful for the hard work that you put in. And again, Brendan was at the forefront, working that and I know Mike and Jessica's been a lot of time.
I was not giving you the ring. I know you have, there's a lot of big personalities that you have to, to work around. So. You did a wonderful job.
Yes, it's been fun. There was a, there was a time that I. Like, kind of like Mayor never thought this would work and just thought we probably ought to get out of it. It just was kind of a. Government boondoggle looking thing almost and it's turned around and it, and Raymond's ideas have done that. Something I'm really proud of now. I'm proud to be on the board of.
Well, I'm honored, I'm honored, really am. And at this point in my career, it, it, for me, it's all about honor. It's about serving, serving others. And this is near and dear to my heart to, to be able to, to serve. My mother was. Used dialysis the last seven years of, of her life. She was, she used the transit system. In Fort Worth, right? And I've worked in Silicon Valley. I've worked, I've helped. Build part of Elon Musk's team. I've built SuperDuck and Super Colliders, all different kinds of things that I've done in my life. This is the thing that I enjoy most because I can see the benefits to humanity. People that you serve and there's millions of people. I, I calculated one time how many people. Have used the systems that I've worked on. It's not like I did it by myself, but I've been part of building like the liberal system in Dallas. And it's over a billion people that will never see my face, but you know that you're serving people that three, three years in years to come. We just lost. One of our revered mechanics to cancer. He was still over fifty years old. And I had an opportunity to, to speak at his, at his celebration of life. And I said, you know, he's. He was revered by, by everybody there, loved by everyone, but he faithfully would, would turn a wrench and. And do whatever he had to to serve, to fix those vehicles. And the honor that he had was to. Deliver services to people that would never see his face. And that's an honorable life. So that's the way I look at it. Thank you.
You've done well. Thank you. Thank you very much. Pretty good. That's good news. All right, next item is. To move into executive session. So at this time, which is. Four fifteen, we're going to executive session. Going to receive advice from the city attorney regarding legal ramifications. Of a contract termination. In pursuant to Texas Government Code, Section five five one oh seven one. City Council will meet in executive session to discuss and receive advice regarding a matter of attorney-client privilege and no final action will be taken.